John is coming.
John Ford?
Yeah. Okay, I'd like to call two of our special work session today. And I'd like the county administrator to please call the road to establish a form.
Mr. Rich?
Present.
Mr. Venable?
Present.
Mr. Butler?
Mr. McBride?
Present.
We have several items that are on our agenda today to discuss. And we have some discussions in our other sessions. And there's some requests that we have a work session to have further discussion of these. First, we wanted to look at the list of roads or chip seal for 2021 and other items that we will discuss regarding our county engineer. Then secondly, we want to talk a little bit about status of where we are with the building considerations. And the real purpose of that, I think today is it was a question we need to be asking. And we'll get the data that we do. And then I would like for Chad to give us an update on what we all have this prior to see and the options there. Been trying to work that for a while and we just need my data. So with that, turn it over to county engineer.
Thank you, Chairman. I think for the discussion part, perhaps where we left it was selection, selection of roads or talking about financial means or the direction we want to go with local roads. So to actually start this discussion, I think this sheet right here might be a good starting point. I know, I know you've all seen this before, but approaching this from, from our assets, I think is what the local can add for a zoomed out view. So if, if we look at the assets for hot mix pavement, that's the first category you see there, there are 220 miles approximately, and we're assuming a seventeen and a half year life expectancy of that. So that, that next number of thirteen miles indicates an annual goal of where we would be if we were on this reasonable cycle of maintaining that inventory. We see the cost associated with that, and then we, we reduce that cost because of our rebuild Alabama funds that we are now receiving along with the federal aid exchange fund. So that's both of those, okay? But, but the key there in what I want to point out is that thirteen miles. Okay, the chip seal pavement, the bulk of the inventory lies there. And assuming the same year life expectancy, so that's, that's kind of even around between fifteen and twenty years, and that's reasonable in my opinion. Then we're at fifty miles per year, and we see a cost associated with that. So I'll, I'll just let bridges rest for now. And if we look, if we look at those obligations of what we need to have a successful program, and we look at where we're hitting the mark and perhaps where we're not, and we think back to the rebuild Alabama report that you guys just saw at the last meeting, we were at almost eleven miles of resurfacing that was represented on that report, okay? Most of that, which next year will, that will be 100%, was all hot mix pavement in that category. So we're not far, terribly far from what was selected last year from being at our benchmark on that category. So that leaves chip seal pavement. And if you think back, I know Mr. Venable remembers, not all that many years ago, there were zero miles, and then another year of zero miles, and then maybe one road, and then seven miles, and then ten, and then the last year you guys picked twenty-two miles, which is great. But you can see how that twenty-two miles compares to what we're talking about when we look at how much is out there and how much we're covering each year and where we're, where we're landing on what we could expect. So if we look at our shortfalls on covering those things, it's, it's always, before my time, it's always been an annual year-to-year problem to try to solve and to try to allocate how many miles of local road resurfacing we would, we would do. There was always federal dollars set aside for the major minor collectors. There was always other money for that, but this always depended upon general fund and/or public works funds, okay? So I think that's where, I think that's where our discussion really lies on, on what, what we can obligate toward this comfortably out of both of those funds, being 112 out of Rudden Bridge or a little fund otherwise, and 111 with us.
What dollar amount are you comfortable with that we ever did this, this upcoming year?
Public work.
Without assistance from you.
I think 350 we're good, you know? That doesn't, that doesn't pose a problem often. And, and at that mark, then I don't think we're, I don't think we're threatening 100. So it's kind of like we talked about before, we have, we have these dollars represented on this, on this sheet summary wise, and that's a larger per mile dollar amount. Okay, what you're looking at on the list is labor and equipment only because that has to be paid out to a contractor. So the, the twenty miles, you know, the ten per year we've been doing, all that is flowing by the time it takes to do it, cash flow wise, it, it works. So if we're in the twenty, if we're in the twenty-two, twenty-five mile range, I don't think 100 is a concern. If we, if we pick all fifty miles of these, then we have to consider the material costs too because that's exceeding what we typically do. Now, that's, that's the cost to do it. When it comes down to doing it, that brings about a slightly different discussion. So we, we can and we have been able to successfully prepare and get ten miles paved, but the short straw is getting it prepared, okay? One, one consideration for this is it's resurfacing, but a lot of this is reconstructing. So at the time that we address these roads, typically the, the trees are always cut. Boom, mine has to be done. The digits need to be addressed. The crawl strings that may be fifty years old, that's the time to replace those. So it's the prep work. And then when we get into some of these roads that you guys see from the pictures, there's no saving any of that. That's, that's all got to, got to be incorporated into the base for the new road. So preparation time is the short straw in covering more than ten miles per year. And this category that's on this sheet where it shows labor, in order to, to ever hit this benchmark that's on this paper on, on what we would need to do to cover fifty miles, then we're talking about two roadway prep crews that work year-round and never stop, okay? And right now, that's not possible.
So Jonathan, where are we with what was approved last year?
Roughly half. So not, not paved, but prepped, roughly half.
And that has been over a span of how many months?
A year, I'd say.
So we picked twenty-two miles, and we were able to prep and get ready eleven miles. I know that the slides and the working seventeen cut deeply in their, in their workforce and their time. Once we get all the slides fixed, how much is that going to help when we're able to devote manpower back to local roads?
Well, yeah, seventeen was a big deal because we were, we were occupied with that. However, we were still able to, to progress with that. So I don't see that it changes it a whole lot, particularly if these slides go like we have 189 set up, where we're doing minimal support for them and, you know, they're doing all the work. So it comes down to, to, to really changing that game and having two road prep crews. I mean, there needs to be a whole nother road prep crew to make a large difference in that. And that's, that's skills that, that you don't just pick up.
Every day.
Somebody off the street and then, you know, three months they're running a motor grader. It just don't work that way. So it's a progression of retaining these folks, them training. We have the equipment, we have the material, it's just having the people, the skill to be able to do that.
How many people would you suggest for another complete road crew?
Minimum of five.
How, how many people right now are you short on your, your ask?
We're still down eight technically. You know, we're on the brink of filling some of these, but you could, you could, you could call it eight, I think. Seven, eight.
So ditch five, you're talking about the within the eight or is it eight plus five?
No, it's, you know, when we're, when we're full up, it will help some, but so, so now, you know, we're able to have a road prep crew. We can't stop patching and we can't stop battling vegetation. It takes a great old crew running all the time, okay? And then we need to have a bridge crew. We didn't talk about bridges, but you know, you can just glance at that and see that there's a hundred over fifty years old. When you have in-house crews that can rehab bridges instead of replacing bridges, we can save a lot of money there. We're still going to have to replace bridges, but if you think back to as recent as 118, County Road 118, okay, that, that would have been a four to $500,000 bridge to replace. Our folks worked on it a long time, I mean, I'll acknowledge that, but we spent about $90,000 that was, that was not already budgeted, okay? So I'm not counting their labor and I'm not counting their equipment because if you look at it from the viewpoint of that would have been working and spent anyway, we had those outside material costs for that structure. Well, there are projects like that that our people can do, and, and we realize a giant savings in that versus all contract work. So there's still going to be deep water, deep water work, large structures that, that are coming, that will have to be contract work. But that's, that's what's represented in the bridge crew labor listed and in the roadway crew. If we want to be, this is my opinion 100%, if we want to be most impactful on citizens' lives right now as far as the roads and bridges that are out there, it's those local roads? We have a model that will work for the major minor collectors, okay? We can get creative and stretch some of that and preserve some of the city resurface. What we have will work, but our local roads, figuring out a solution for that is, is critical. So you can see how big of a disparity we are in what we're doing versus what we need. So this ten men that's under the labor item, that's that road prep crew. And then that's a, that's also a large section patch crew. What I mean by that is a lot of these roads we get on, maybe they're not terrible from one end to the other, but there's a whole section that is terrible. So that crew could prep and chip seal those small sections or large sections. So it'd be like a large section patch. So the roads, well, there's a lot of good, but there's, but what's bad is really bad, but it's a small part. Well, you can really change the condition of that road by taking care of the area that's really bad, and, and maybe it can get by another couple of years until the entire length needs resurfacing.
What was the second crew you had, road prep crew?
The bridge crew and then road prep crew and then basically a, a large section patch crew, if you want to call that. That'd be like a prep and a paving type of thing.
So the hot mix almost taken care of itself.
Almost.
With their federal money and then the rebuild Alabama money, we're almost hitting that benchmark.
Almost.
Chip seal was three million dollars a year that would take to, to get us at fifty miles a year and then a million dollars to bridge. So that's four million dollars we're currently spending about three to $500,000 a year. So the way I look at it, and tell me if I'm wrong, we need about three and a half million more dollars annually into the public works department in order to get us out of regression and keep a, a good inventory of safe roads.
That's, that's, that's just Rudden Bridge money. You'd need a little more to put toward labor, I think.
Five additional people.
Yeah.
Do you think puts you back up to about four million dollars a year annually is what it would take?
Yeah.
To get us out of regression and so up it plus five hundred K labor.
And, you know, we, we should be able to take guys and leave them on bridges. You know, the guys we used on 117, that's the same crew that was working on 118. So there's half a dozen of these hanging by a thread now, you know? And you don't get calls about bridges because when the car goes over, that bridge was fine. You know, the reality's underneath, it's what we see and it's, but when the barricades go up, that's when it's, that's when it becomes real evident real fast, hey, that bridge was in bad shape.
So backing up sort of to, to what we have funded for this year, you regularly get about half done, so you still have half to do as we move into twenty-two, right? Half of that work.
So yeah, if, if we're talking calendar year twenty-two for sure, we're going to be.
Yeah, talk, talk in budget year, which is October.
Yeah. So we're going to be prepping, the crew will, well, they can't stop, the one crew can't stop. So they'll continue work throughout the course of the winter and, and preparation for our seasonal limitations lifting on when our contractor can start resurfacing. So that's, that's at the earliest May. So it'll take all winter to work and prepare what's left on that list to be ready for paving season this summer.
We had obligated from the general fund, how much? Do you remember how much we obligated from the general fund?
Three.
Three hundred?
Three hundred, three to 350.
Yeah, I was thinking a little over 300,000.
Twenty-one general fund.
Yeah.
I guess my question is trying to lead to, you're looking at, um, here for twenty, is this, this twenty-two?
Yeah.
At, at fifty miles, what, what's reasonable given what we've heard February can do? And funding part, and then, and then it leads to the discussion, how do we get out of that on being able to do 11 miles per year? You get to where you're going through, saying about what the money we need and the crew we need to, to get to getting more mileage done.
Jonathan, you said that about $350,000 out of public works fund is about all you could say without overloading your budget, without, how many, how many miles of road are $350,000 due on a chip seal application?
Ten. I mean, if we're talking, it depends on if we're talking material cost or we're talking labor and equipment cost. So if we're, if we're just looking at, at labor and equipment, then, you know, thirty-five, thirty-five thousand a mile is, is a reasonable.
Well, that's about half of what we, less than half what we've done this year.
And so, and I'm, and I'm not looking at budget necessarily, Mr. Venable, I'm looking at cash balance with 111. So if, if we're, you know, less than a million dollars cash balance for, for that fund, you know, it's, it's concerning to me. And the reason, we, we have large projects and the cash flow does, like, you know, we're into 189 for 1.2. We've got a six-figure geotech project on the table right now. We've got, still have local roads obligation from the twenty miles we're talking about. So.
Yeah, FEMA reimbursement would come a lot slower than the County Road Seventeen reimbursement.
Those funds are, those funds are with Alabama EMA and they hold us now. So we're hopeful that that, that that flows like it's supposed to, but we, you know, there's a lot of unknowns when it comes to that. And then, you know, we may have, hopefully not, but you never know what disasters might happen.
Right.
And that's not, that's not triple R reimbursable. So think about Rosalie, we spent 150, $200,000 in Rosalie cleaning that town up. So you never know what can happen. And to have some reserves for cash flow and, and things that could happen, to not have that in 111 is, that's our main, that's our main bank.
Before the commission obligates anything out of the general fund, I would honestly, you know, our, our cash balance, what, what obligations such as what we've already promised to spend on the, the current twenty-two miles, we got to decide what's a safe threshold for us to retain for storm damage or whatever emergency may, may come up. And then whatever we have above that, we've got it from other things that we're, we're talking about doing, but we've got to, yes, get some laid on you, Bob, to kind of come up with where our cash balance is and, and what obligations we have against that current cash balance.
I can get that data for y'all.
I don't think.
I've got some of it already for me that I've been looking at, but I mean, for an overall, once you go through this entire discussion, you know, correction, the mileage, you know, we can put all that data together for you.
I want to look at dinner work session for the twenty-seventh, if I have that. But it seems to me with that, and I agree with that, that gets us to where we're deep, we're getting close to trying to do something like this, the fifty mile. It seems to me that we've got, we've got a little one run, one runway here of time to be able to build to that. And so you're, we're not going to solve that problem in the next two months. So it's a, I think that we need to look at a strategy of how we're going to get to that so we do that. From what I see here, if we don't get to that, it'll take us 100 years to get to the roads.
Yeah.
And we can't, we can't do that. Then we need to look at sources of, other sources of funding potentially. But I like the discussion because it gets us to start thinking of how to position ourselves to be able to do something like you're proposing.
Yeah, and there's no implied pressure by that, Mr. Robbins, okay? It's, it's just being clear, that's, it needs it. You guys, you guys forwarded us a little last year, you picked all of them. Well, we're going to make sure that wasn't the case this time. In all seriousness, you know, those roads need it. I don't think you'd argue with me in looking at the pictures, but that's a lot, you know, that's a lot, that's a lot.
I think that the next session for me, it would be helpful if you would come back and say, given what you still have to do with last year for, what can we reasonably do, even if we tried to stretch it and do, do a little extra, what can we do next year? Seems it doesn't do us any good to go fifty miles worth of work and we're going to give another 10 miles.
Another thing to consider, you know, we've had at least one municipality, small municipality that has some of their rebuild Alabama dollars set aside. They're willing to partner with us to do some roads within their township. And we may have another one that, that exploring and looking at that. So we need to see what those roads are going to cost because I wouldn't want to do those partnerships even before we've done local roads because we're getting more, you know, we're getting assistance through it. So I mean, I, I would rather put 50% and get two for one and depend on local roads.
Chad, that's a good discussion we had with the mayor and. But by the way, let me ask the question, since, since you rebuild Alabama, is that principle we're using contractors to do that work or we using our groups to do that work?
We play off the work and use contractors mostly, how many? You can explain a lot better than I can.
So it's technically our choice. So what, what we have, the way we have selected to do it the past two years, what you all have selected to do it, we've proposed and you've agreed, I think that's very well said, is major minor collector and the ST routes. So ST routes is a, I guess it's a public works term, but, but it's the hot mixed paved roads. So if we think about major and minor collectors, and those are routes identified by others, which is Aldon, and that's the routes that they said, here's your federal money and here's the route you can spend it on. Now, as, as state funds were funneled to this county, routes were selected based on high traffic roadways, and certain routes were paved with hot mix versus chip seal. And it's typically always sections that have high traffic numbers on the route. However, that's kind of a one-time, it's a blessing and a curse because it's a, it's a one-time stream of money that, that's allowed to be used for this ST project, but there's no promise of reoccurrence, and there's no mechanism for future funding, and there's no maintenance allotment of funds either state or federal to maintain this new asset you have out there. So for several administrations removed, these things have been laying out there, okay? What federal aid exchange did is, is basically keep the federal dollars the same, but there's some, those restrictions on what you could use it for. Rebuild said you could use it on major minor collectors or local roads or bridges. So it gave us a supplemental funding with even less restrictions. So in our discussions in the past, what has led us to the, to the model that, that's broken down on that sheet is, okay, now we have enough money to take care of our major minor collectors where most of the users are and these ST, previously paved ST roads where most of the users are. But it still don't really give enough for bridges and it still don't really give enough for local roads if you look at it like that. Matter of fact, the first round I think we did of rebuild Alabama had a couple of chip sealed local roads that were selected in that. 350 was one, maybe another road that escapes me. Rebuild dollars paid for that. So that's a long answer to your question, but rebuild is flexible for however we see fit.
So we can choose. So I, I think, I'm just throwing out a paper for all of us to, to jump into this discussion, but it seems we've got to consider that we still got half of last year's to do. How much can we reasonably do next year with, with finishing that plus this next year's money? But then I think, Jason, what the point you're making is how do we start putting in place the, I'll call it infrastructure, but he has the equipment and the people to be able to, to get more miles. And we sort of, I'd like to see your thinking on what we need to do to that. Until we have that, doesn't it, it seems to me, there's no need to put much money to it if you can't, if we keep does it out. I, I, it's just a thought, I don't know if that's near the right answer.
All of our municipalities receive rebuild Alabama dollars. They can't spend it on anything except for roads. Some of the smaller municipalities don't have any roads of their own, so they're willing to spend those dollars to help us pay for county. I think we need to, to meet with a lot more of our, our small town mayors and have that conversation with them.
Leverage dollars and also, let me throw this out there too. So we talked about over the course of the winter, hopefully completing this. Another thing to think about when, when choosing something is that would keep us, keep us moving, keep us working on roads, even if it's not 20 miles. If we have 10 miles worth or five miles worth or eight miles worth, then that, those eight miles are in our crosshairs and we're, we're moving on that.
Yeah, we'll get approval portion of this and come back three months later and approve an additional amount and we.
Yeah, there's, there's time, obviously, but, but just, you know, if we can keep them, keep them working on that.
Do you think it'll take them all winter up till March or April to prove what we approved last year's that we have pretty much?
Yes, to come up with it. That'll get us plenty of time to look at the, what we have obligated.
Right.
That'll get us plenty of time to look at the, what we have obligated and what we have left to spend.
So I've written down three actions, there may be more. Meet with the mayors and rebuild Alabama, see where those dollars are. Now, those dollars I presume are going to be to take care of roads within the municipality, so understand that. And I would like to see your thinking, Jonathan, on, given what we still have to do from last year, what can we, plus what we want to do this coming year? How much, given your staff and given your equipment, what we can reasonably do? Honestly, I don't care if you stretch that a little bit, in case we were able to speed up the process. But, uh, so the other discussion we had was, how do we position Jonathan to be able to do more? I, I, I think having him come in with, uh, this is what I need in people, this is what I need in equipment, this is what we're going to need in dollars. And, uh, then that gives us a basis to go and take a look at how do we, how do we find that? Just maybe the wrong action, action items, but, and there may be more. So I'm, I'm just putting it out for discussion.
Jonathan, prioritizing your needs, crews, right there, number one.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. It's, it's, it's people. So those numbers at the bottom of that sheet, that, that makes it happen.
And you could put that number together for us on what you need to.
Yeah, yeah, at the bottom of that paper, I think.
Okay. So can we discuss this, want to discuss this on the twenty-seventh? In the work session, I'm not, in the other part of the work session, is that fair?
Jonathan, you're going to leave. I think you said you made a call over the top.
I'll be, I'll be there.
Okay.
Jonathan, what's the, what's the legality or responsibility? Let's just, let's just say town A that has what they consider a town road that's within their municipality. Would we become a contractor if we helped them or did we become the maintainer if we helped them?
So, so I think if I'm understanding your question right, it would be a, uh, we'd be working on county road or municipality?
Municipal road. That's what you're looking to, right?
No, what I was looking to, we have some municipalities that don't have any roads and they're receiving money that they can only spend on roads. So they can spend it on our county roads within their borders.
Okay, that, that clears it up because, because I was, I was under the, the confusion of town A merges their money with us and we go in and pay their, their city road.
Their city road.
We're done anything on their roads. Only that, you know, they own the right of way too, then they would pay us the, the full amount. But the woman that we're talking about, they want a particular road paid ever since I've been on the commission. And it needs paid, but it's not as bad as some of these. But they have a considerable amount of money that they've received over the last three years. They only have like a mile and a half of road that they own that are in good shape. So they have the, the financial means to be able to help us pay a county road that isn't a harder version of municipality.
Okay. You have a few other items that, that you wanted to discuss? This is work session.
Sir, I can keep going.
Keep going.
I guess next, there should be a photo sheet and some summary dollars for trucks, heavy duty, heavy duty trucks.
That's awesome, all the trucks.
Okay. So the last time we talked about trucks was, uh, we had a settlement sheet you were reviewing about auctions that occurred a few months back. And we talked about, um, how we prospered in that. And we also mentioned that, uh, the unsettled market, particularly as it relates to availability. So it's, um, it affected us with the trucks that, that you all had previously approved. Just as a recap, if you remember, there were four triaxles approved, three medium duties, and then we do a road tractor every year in that rotation. All of that was approved, we took possession of the four, three of the four triaxles. The fourth triaxle was canceled, okay? It was canceled at the time that availability was being an issue with supply chain and all the things. So, um, canceled meant they couldn't supply the truck for the price, okay? So the order was canceled. So what we're seeing is the, the units that are able to be manufactured now are, obviously there was a drastic price increase for various reasons, I'm assuming. But those units are going to fill the previous promises for folks just in our same situation from the year before, which leaves the current year allotment drastically reduced. To compound that, with only X amount of units being made, they have decisions to make on whether those would go to very thin margin profit government buyers or they go to the private market where there is a much larger margin for profit for the dealership as well as manufacturing. Okay, so that all boils down to instability and quick action needed if, if we want to make sure we're in line for this upcoming year. So this is typically the time we take up trucks, heavy duty, and we make an order. And we're, we're looking at this, the very same thing. And the selection you make kind of assures us an ACCA purchase in time for spring auction. Well, every bit of that's out the window for all the reasons I just said. So what we have is units available, not complete, and these two comparisons we're going to look at on, on everything, but we have units available to backfill the one we didn't get. And then also order for the replacement units for all of those things for the upcoming cycle to stay on track. However, January one is when everything's turned loose. So the reason for this today and now is if you see fit to move forward with this and the vote can happen on the twenty-seventh, and we can have a purchase order at the stroke of January one, then we're going to have trucks by probably this time, third or fourth quarter of next year. So if all those stars align, then we should stay on rotation with a year's worth of usage mileage on all our equipment. And then we will, we will be able to be on inventory for some auction. It may be, it may be the next spring or we may make December. So I can't, I can't say two and I don't have the, I haven't received, I usually wait until I get the settlement because there's commission dues. They may charge a cleaner if they don't like the looks of a tire, then they replace a tire. But the last truck that sold, we paid right at a hundred fifty-three thousand. It was the same price in the last settlement and it sold for two hundred and forty thousand dollars, so.
And we've used it.
It had twenty-two thousand miles.
Yeah.
It is actually, it's a little rougher than the ones we usually see because it was, it was involved with seventeen and saw a lot of use.
Of course, but right now demand, you can't find trucks.
So.
We drag our feet on this and don't vote on the twenty-seventh.
We gotta do it.
We could see the end of our program and the profitability that we've seen with that over the last year.
I think we could still, you know, I don't know. I mean, I really don't know how to answer that because I think, I think we could probably get pricing, but they, they may not be able to promise us any units. Like, we'll see in a minute. I can't even get pricing, I could get pricing from Peterbilt on one, one category of this, but they can't promise, they can't promise that they can have us any trucks.
Right now, we're taking one-year trucks to the auction. We wind up taking two-year-old trucks to the auction. We're going to have double a mileage and we're going to devalue them a lot more.
If we can get them.
If we can get them.
That's right, and I asked Jonathan to bring this to us today so that we can put it on your agenda for the twenty-seventh.
So I, I can walk through all these categories, it's, it's.
So I just want to understand, is this what, what you're needing, you're going to lay out for?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Jonathan, one question I have is, is you've got two, two providers on, on two of the three. Is there any benefit to, for, for your maintenance crew to have a uniformity of fleet? Or, or is there not enough difference that matters?
That's a good question. So, um, yes and no. We, it's different in the fact of some are better with customer service than others. Theoretically, by paper, they're all under warranty, so it shouldn't matter. We should be covered pretty much bumper to bumper on everything. Some of these folks are, you know, are, are better at taking care of you than, than others, I guess you could say. But I don't know that it's anything to sway anything that I'm going to lay out and I hadn't approached it.
Well, I guess the, the, just, just thinking in terms of, are there common parts and things that could be shared to, to, to help keep them on, for your guys? I mean, I know in dealing with warranty situations, you're going, I have, I guess they've, there's nothing besides oil that you're going to be.
That's right. And actually, it's the same parent company that runs both of these.
Okay. All right, I'll bet.
So.
Try John Moe's or should we?
Yeah. So the, um, so the five, five units, so five is not, don't follow your seal on that, okay? I'm not, that's, that's the one that you've already approved, it's just in a new project. And then that's four and the one that, the one that they're saying that we can take early possession of. So this one that, that makes up the five is going to be the money that's coming from that one I just said, okay? So we're going to take that two forty less commission, less whatever else they have on there. And if you see fit, we're going to buy one of these and we're going to take possession of it soon, okay? It's going to fill our other one that wasn't complete. And then these other are going to be third or fourth quarter delivery. So probably this time next year perhaps. So that's the five. And the comparison, you'll see the comparison between the Peterbilt five six seven and the KW T eight ADS. So the T eight ADS is an ACCA bid. The Peterbilt five six seven, if I'm not mistaken, is a source flow quote. There's, there's a, there's a difference there in the price and the Peter, the Kenworth is our recommendation on those. For five.
Those are both with automatic transmissions?
Both automatic.
Everything now is pretty well going to have automatics in them, right?
It's better for us and the market, the market almost requires it now. So the same things we face with CDL drivers, they do also. And ever since the CDL law changed to where there's restriction on drivers that are not approved and tested on their performance part or the manual shift, they're restricted to automatic transmission. If our guys are interested, that's the immediate way we try to accommodate that. But most folks, particularly younger ones, they're restricted. The next is three units, so that's the straight replacement for the three, our current three truck inventory on the medium duties. And you'll see the price there in almost every one of these categories is a forty percent price increase. So these trucks, we, we have taken one-year-old trucks, just like the ones that's on here, and they have sold for seventy-five thousand dollars before. And this last auction, they sold for a hundred and ninety-eight, not ours, but someone. So.
So with their prices going up, our auction prices also so far, or in the plan?
Hopefully this thing don't bust, you know? What is a risk too? You know, we're, we're in a high and, and something happens between now and then, but.
But our investment flow, because we've been able to turn it over every year. So worst case scenario, if we see it busting, we hold on to what we've got and drive them till two years or three years, four years, whatever, get it, get it worth our while.
Make them a point, we have to do that.
Yeah. So, um, you can see the price there, there's only one brand listed and that's because of what I mentioned earlier. They, they could, um, they cannot supply units for, for that category. And then last, um, you'll see the twenty twenty-three Peterbilt three eighty-nine daycap versus the Kenworth T eight ADS. So there's very little price difference there. The P is actually a little cheaper. However, in the spec, there's a couple differences. The KW has a five hundred and ten horse, where the P is a five hundred. And there's twenty-four inch tires on the Kenworth versus twenty-two and a half on the P. I couldn't really pull out a whole lot of other differences in that. But kind of to what you're saying, AJ, if we're going this far with one brand, I would really recommend just getting a, getting a Kenworth daycap too for no more difference than that.
Okay, so for upcoming meeting, you, you were going to put on the agenda, will you approve?
Yes, sir. If you could approve the purchase of, the request would be if you could approve the purchase of five of triaxles, three of the medium duties and then one daycap, all Kenworth, that, that would do it. And, um, and hopefully, we're, you know, this thing's grown to the point that we're talking about a lot of money now. I mean, it's a lot. So, so ideally, we take delivery and then we're usually not more than a month or two, maybe three max away from an auction. So all that, hopefully all that stay, it flows and, and we're not, we're not hanging out on anything dollar wise.
Do you think your budget covered?
I think so, yeah. I think there'll be no impact too.
Okay, Jonathan, keep going.
Is there anything, uh, yes. So, uh, you should see the letter dated December sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. And it's, uh, in regards to Assistant County Engineer Recommendation. This is due to the upcoming retirement replacement of the current Assistant County Engineer, which, um, will be with us until the end of January. This will provide overlap for this candidate if, if you approve to share time and knowledge transfer for that position. So I, I wanted to get this in front of you now. Typically, personnel managers could be voted on same day, but this is a little different. One, by being a professional physician, other than the top positions and appointments that you see. And, um, the other that there's a difference in what we're recommending pay-wise. So on the advertisement that was posted, there was a starting pay advertised. The amount listed in this is nine percent higher than that, okay? And the reason for that is the qualifications of the candidate that was selected, that was the committee's choice on selection. The difference, um, in, the largest difference in what I could point out to you on the entry level advertisement and what the position requires versus what this candidate possesses is near, near ten years' experience. The, the position that the candidate currently holds with Aldon is the most similar position within Aldon that, that could, that could relate to the Assistant County Engineer position. So considering that, um, also that the, that the advertisement and the requirements of the position are in engineering training. This candidate possesses a professional engineering license, which legally could satisfy the requirements of county engineer in the absence of, of me. So certifications, this, this candidate possesses certifications and the experience. Uh, so for those reasons, um, the salary requirements that were listed within the candidate's application, this means that. The candidate is willing to accept this pay. And the second sheet behind that letter, you will notice, um, this is a little dated, so it's, it's safe to assume it's gone up some. I know they had raises within the state. But on June ninth, twenty twenty, this was the assistive pay for every assistant in the state. So my, my hand scribbling at the bottom is the average. And the pay that I'm recommending in this letter is below the state average for Assistant County Engineer.
Okay. Any questions? So Jonathan, we can put this on the agenda for the 27th?
Please, sir.
Okay. Everybody okay with that? Okay. You got a picture?
Yes, sir. It's County Route 189. I know there's a lot of, there's a lot of wondering about the progression of that and progress. We're near 25% complete, so you can see at a glance what's taking place and perhaps still missing.
Now Jonathan, on this, where this has been faced off here, is that how it's all gonna look down?
Yeah, so the, the center section is, resembles most complete. The, you can tell where the large, the large anchors have been cut off. And so that center section, the very top portion, is basically what could be expected on the, you know, the final phase of the wall. And this'll go down in three phases till they, till they get to the floor of the nation.
So you're coming out here and do the same thing?
Yeah, it'll just keep going down essentially. But all that fill has to daylight out downhill, so that there's, that there's positive drainage away from the side.
Any backfill on this?
No.
Okay.
Matter of fact, once it gets down, it'll have a footing that has to go in place for the very lower section. So all this will work top-down, kind of thinking back to that drawing where, where you could see the anchors coming in at different rows. And then at the bottom, there's actually micro pile, and then battered micro pile for the footing that would essentially support all that above it.
Okay. So we're just, we're just building bunches out there?
Yeah, it'll actually just be almost over the wall. Yeah, it'll be, it'll be guardrail protected from travelway, but that, that'll all be gone, kind of like 17.
Estimated completion?
Late, late January, but you might want to put a, put a couple weeks in. The contract is finished in March, January, and then, you know, we'll have.
So it's not always easy to work down those parts?
Yeah, that's right. February, mid-February might be his time for guardrail paving, so February, we should.
Jonathan, thanks.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next topic is, we have put together the committee, so to look at the use of county and county buildings. The objective was to look at how we could be most, most cost-effective, cost-efficient, and secure in the use of our buildings. The committee has been working, while we're not here to have an answer, make decisions or any of that, is just a discussion of where we are. But really, what I'd, what I'd like to get to is what are the questions that we need to put on the table that we've gotta go and get down? So one of the things that I'd like to discuss, that we need to get on with, regardless of what we do.
Yes, the real issue.
So let's, let's open for discussion.
I'd like to hear one from Ms. Clark.
All right. So the last, the last time that we talked about this, we had a discussion about traffic. I did talk to the mayor about, about traffic issues. He said that traffic studies had been done on that when the original construction was made, and so there was an expectation of, of traffic there. To do an additional one is, I don't know what the, what the timeframe would be on that, but I think it would be something that would really slow down the project. Not that it's, not that it's not justified, but just, just be aware of that.
When you add, what, 800 more people to it per day?
Well, but it's not like there wasn't things there existing. It's not, it's not a new, it's just a repurposing. So I don't know, I don't know what the initial was, but it would definitely.
Well, to look at, what was the DHR load per day? He sort of had, I don't think, 600.
I don't know. But of course, since, since that turn has been created, there's been a large number of homes built behind it. There's, there's been, I mean, there's, there's things that had to be factored in, because that subdivision was definitely in development at the time. The property that's adjacent is, or has been for sale, and I noticed the other day, there's a new sign there, and so maybe there's a, that increases the possibility of maybe, I don't know, a new energy for it with, with the development. Being catty-cornered to that, there may be something new there, and that opens up the possibility of another exit point, whether it be on 35. And so that would greatly diminish anything that would flow out on 72.
Have we, have we had a discussion with Aldott yet?
Not, not regarding that.
I think we need to have a discussion with Aldott, see what they would be willing to do, and just ask, ask them how they would deal with that front.
Okay.
Because if we don't do that, and we get started with that, and then they come in behind it, and then we're in a backup situation.
True. All right. The other question that was, was asked was about, about usage, and I just apologize. I made the connection with Mr. Chaney to find out what, what that should be. I just haven't been able to follow up with getting over there. And so that is, that's something that I think, I mean, it's, it's a cognizant thing, but, you know, we're, we're not adding any service, so, you know, whatever water usage, those entities would have had over here, they're gonna have over there. Power should be similar. The difference, the difference being that it's in a, in a newer building, hopefully a more efficient building. So there's some, there's some things in the upgrade with the HVAC, which surely would be more, more efficient. We're gonna have to look at lighting issues, and so that should be more efficient. So whatever, whatever we get from Mr. Chaney, I think, I think it's gonna be a high investment, because that would be based on past usage. But what are your thoughts on that?
You're probably right. I mean, what, leaving here and going over there should reduce, you know, consumption on water and.
Balance.
But we're also gonna eventually move folks into here, but, you know, we're emptying, if we do this, we're emptying the other building on 72, so we'll have that.
The discussion has occurred between all of the folks that would, that would be involved in, in the move, and they have been, tell them if I'm wrong, but space has been made available that satisfies their needs, and there's no, no issue with that.
Yeah, there's actually a bit of excitement.
Our issue now is a hard question about traffic. Or should we gas, call it downtown, what it does?
Open up this one.
That's pretty good. Bring them in here.
Go ahead.
So again, you know, for me, I think, I think we just, we just need to do as much advance, advanced planning as we can. The safety aspects of being able to, to have the major flow of this building go into a building that's, that's much more conducive to handicap, elderly access, being able to space out, having, having some, with the design that we're proposing, to have kind of this, this large bank lobby exhibit, I think you're gonna get better coverage and safety for the employees. You're gonna be able to preconstruct it to where there's barriers between the, between the general public and the employees, so there shouldn't be any aerosol transfer that we're, that we're currently struggling with now. Something else that I think, I think is, is big time, if we do, by creating two locations, if we do have to shut a building down, it's less likely to, to have a complete shutdown on the other, because conceivably, if this building is closed, then we can meet over there, or temporarily, an office could be located there, vice versa, they could, they could come back here and operate. So I think it makes us, makes us more sustainable that way. Now, access, I mean, you know, it's easier for people from around the county to get there. I mean, I think maybe just the folks that live right here, I guess, I guess from Skyline, it's easier to get here than it would be to get out to the 7235 exchange, but for the most part, everybody else. Sectioned up, obviously, that's easier. Coming from the north intermountain, it's easier. Stevens Bridgeport, it's easier. So I just, I think, I mean, you guys tell me, what are, what are your reservations or inclinations?
Yeah, for one, one or two of the thoughts that's coming out of the ARPA and ACCA is, when you look at what goes on here every day, when we're putting 800 to 900 people through here, and some days it's up to 1,300 or more that are coming through here. Cutting down on congregating areas is, is, is one of the objectives of the American Rescue Plan Act. Having a facility that if people can get in and out, have good social distancing, and also upgrade so that you, you have an HVAC system that is taken care of, moving the air, killing the pathogens in the air, and those kind of things, and that's work to be done. The reason I mention that is we have asked and, and we've asked for our folks that are helping us with the IAC to come and take a look at that building and see, does it satisfy the requirements for use of all the money to help us with the cost if we do it? And does it help us solve some of the problems we have here with having parts numbers, people standing in two, two queue lines in the hallway here as they go into where there's revenue from it? So there are benefits to public health and public safety by doing this, but they are. You guys asked some very good questions the last time we discussed this, and we need to get answers from us. Traffic, does it create a traffic issue out on the highway parts? Cost, do we have the cost to do that even if we were to sell the buildings that we vacate? Do we still have a cost issue? And we really need to do a survey of folks, a real survey of folks downtown to make sure that they are satisfied with it, and we don't create a real problem for merchants in downtown Scottsboro. That's an action that we need to take, and even if it's a couple of us walking around and survey the citizens or the businesses down here to make sure that they, they don't have an issue with this. Early thoughts was no, it would not, but we need to walk around.
Has anybody contacted any of the owners?
There has been a walk-around to talk to business owners around here. The general, the majority of you was that it would not have any. But we need to do more than just talk. We need to go over some specific questions. We need to talk to them, what we're trying to do, what, what the number of people that are coming into town every day so that they have an appreciation for that, and they can make a successful case on that kind of data. So it needs to be, at least I think it needs to be a pretty, a pretty well-structured survey. And I don't need a sheet of paper to fill out, I need a walk-around and get responses from the businesses. I'm just throwing that out on the table for us, there's things to do.
How do we go about arriving at an estimated cost for this remodel and improvement? And then how much of it can be paid for through ARPA funds? And in the remainder, if we spend general fund dollars, then, you know, that cuts into our road paving, so are we gonna issue a bond? We issue a bond, do we have any paying tenants that's gonna help service that bond? Or is that bond issue gonna be a new obligation to the general fund?
I think they're all, all great questions, and we've gotta get to that. One of, one of the approaches that we, we did is, we did have a crew go and look at changes that could be made to the building, and put a cost estimate for if we were to, if we were to do all those changes. And they were very upfront with it, says, this is everything we, you could do, and you don't have to do all of these. So we've gotta take a look at that and say, what is required to be done to do this? And in some cases, maybe a little more to make it, you know, very, I don't mean ecstatic in it, we don't overdo it, but at least that it's a comfortable building for the citizens of the county to go in. So we need to relook that. Jason, you got a very good point. We need to relook, give the other pieces, bring in the IAC folks, the folks that are working with IAC to come in the building and say, this is what you need to do. So we've got that. And with that, I think we get their support that we can use ARPA funds for that. And remember, as we looked at, at ARPA, that was one of the areas we said, well, maybe we can consider. All about the general fund. In my mind, if there's a big cost to the general fund, it's almost a deal breaker on doing this. We, we gotta do this, and we gotta do the issue, in my mind, of making sure we have the type of funds in the general fund available. We do have a natural disaster that we can deal with that, because we're responsible for initial cost outlay for that. You guys know much better than me, we've been here before. But I think we have to, we have to start the payment, so taking care of that. And so we'd have to have general fund running.
I know for the past three years, we've come a tremendous long way with our roads than we did three years ago. I mean, Jonathan has done an outstanding job on, on it also, and the crew.
I, I've sort of wanted to lay on the table for us to maybe certainly discuss at our next meeting. The one thing that we need to do, you guys have said it before, all of you have said it, we've gotta get on with doing that roof on that building, or it is just to continue to deteriorate, and the cost of repair is gonna be ever increasing cost. So I put on the table at the next meeting, whether to go ahead and, and execute that, at least go get the bids on it, rather than say not execute, but go put out another bid. I know we've done that before, but upgrade the bid package and go out and get a bid on what it would take to do the roof. So we don't want a decision here today, but is that fair to put on the table?
There was a little bit of changing in the requirements of the shingles that, that we probably pulled in some additional bidders, and it would probably reduce the, the cost of the bids that we did get.
Oh, the shingles rather than the metal roof?
Well, the, the specific shingle that.
Does it was a 35?
We specified, it was like a special order, like a special production shingle. Now, it didn't used to be, but due to the demand, they're making what's selling the most, the most, and the premium brand stuff's not, not on the shelf. So it would have to have been ordered, which would raise the cost of it.
Okay. So we'll put that on the agenda for, for the next meeting, at least to go take a look at that and put it on the new business agenda of roof. Remember that our, our objective with the building, and we're nowhere near having an answer or making an decision on that. I think we've got, we've got more work left to do. But look at the options of consolidating the departments, what would be design requirements, changes and modifications for projected costs? What would be our cost benefit of vacating the buildings that we vacate? Make sure we understand the positive and negative implications to downtown Scottsboro, and make positive and negative implications to the citizens of the county. the positive and negative implications to the citizens of the county. Before we do make the, we all agree before, before we do make the decision, whenever we get in position to have these questions answered and ready, we need to have a public hearing and invite the citizens to come hear what we're thinking about and get their feedback. And I think that will be important to our decision. But any other questions, any other things we need to really look at that we don't have on the table right now? Robbie, do you have anything to add?
I don't really have any reservations. I know we talked a lot about the traffic. I never turn off the 72. I go over there today, and I don't know that, I'm not saying that everybody that comes to this building goes to that part of town, but probably a large portion does. I mean, that's where Lawrence is at, that's where the public is going to be at, you know, you've got a strip that's up there. But I never turn in or off of 72. I take the access road.
Well, we'll keep working and get, we think we have good set of data to bring before the commission to decide if we want to move forward for public here. If there are no other questions there, wanted Chad here to give an update on what we have just been doing with the Bryant Community Center.
Thank you, Chairman, thank you Commissioners. Last time we met, I think we kind of limited our decision staff to just looking at acquisition of the property and see if we could get some funding to help out with that. Or to have Mr. Porter take a look at the deed, if you'd like to just touch on that real quick, the restrictions that were found.
It was, there were some restrictions and that would require the family, in my judgment, would require the family to waive those restrictions. Those of the use, I think it would be difficult for the commission to accept a piece of property with restrictions for future use. Probably now would be fine, but you just don't know what's going to happen. Not right now.
Has anybody contacted the family or the?
Yes. I took the information from Mr. Porter, typed up a nice packet of information and presented to the family six, seven weeks ago, but there's been some illness and some death in the family. And I know they've met with an attorney, so I'm not sure if the packet has went to their attorney, I'm sure it has, but there's been some illness and death, so they haven't been able to come up with a decision yet, so they have not got back with me on that.
So we put forward our position to the family about the potential of buying. I think the principal issue we've got is that there was some kind of provision in the previous deed that if it were ever, the Ruatan were to vacate it, that it would go back to, I may be saying this wrong, but it would go back to the family.
It was not necessarily that the Ruatan would vacate it, it would be used for many purposes. I don't remember the exact wording, I didn't read that with you, but.
And so, yeah, we contacted the family and put a position forward in the process. They, if they were to allow us to purchase the property, if that was an option we would proceed with, if it would be a clear deed.
How are they, I know we spoke earlier about they had the funds to operate through January-ish.
Do you have the latest from this week? I've got it. I was at their meeting Tuesday night. Their current checkbook balance as of November 30th was $6,000, I'm sorry, $676. Their cost per month is running about $290. That was their total disbursement in November. So they've got about two and a half months of funding left. They also do have some CDs available, and at the meeting that they had Tuesday night, they proceeded with a motion to turn in one of those CDs and get the funds, and that CD was, that small CD, their smallest CD, and it was $4,000. So they would have those funds ready. So in that bus, I remember one of your biggest concerns when we had this discussion, how far could they keep operating given their revenue?
We've got to do what we've got to do until we can get a building built to help keep moving forward.
So we've looked at several options, as you know, we've put on the table that we could buy. It would be a buy of a very, very small dollar amount that they were talking about selling the property with, and then allowing us then to own the building, which would give us options. We have looked at a number of options. One is of getting funds to do that. One was build a new building. And where could we go get funds? Chad has worked with TARCOT on that, and TARCOT is, could provide, help us get grant money to do that. But when we do that and go through that, get that grant money, there is restrictions on the use of the building. And basically, I would be misstating somewhat, it is for a council of aging use and you can't use it for other activities. That then is a real concern of that community up there. That community has used that building for, is really a community center, is what they've used it for a lot of things. Other option that was put on the table, if we, rather than building a new building, is to modify the existing building. An estimate that they initially had was something over $20,000.
Twenty-seven.
I suspect it's more than that to do that. So one of the options, if we were to take ownership of the building, is to renovate the building. Chad did have the Department of Agriculture come in. They had a meeting at the last, not this past week, but a month ago with Ruatan, that there are loan options available to Ruatan Club, that they can borrow money through the Department of Agriculture, that they could use to renovate the building. There would be no restrictions on it, it would just be payback. It would be sort of a bond for them paying the cost. The concern that the community had there was, it was a 30-year payback, and most of those folks are the age that 30 years is a long ways out. And so what do you do? One of the questions that we, one of the things that we offered as, that we, I offer, let me say I offer, that we could go look at, it would have, obviously, it was something we would have to have reached a deal. If they were to get a loan, right now, we are using that building five days a week. We are servicing 800 citizens up there a month, eight, not 800 citizens, but we're 800 meals a month, sometimes near 1,000. We have not paid any rent in that building. So if they could get a loan, could we, as the commission, potentially pay rent for the use of that building for COA and use the money through COA to do that? That's just a thought. It's another option on the table. It was not a promise, it was just something that we could look at, if they would consider that loan from the Department of Agriculture. So we have, what we have told them is we continue to look at the options, whether or not we can help them with their community center. So that's where we are.
Would that qualify for making ARPA funding? If we could get the building or the property in the county's name, would it be a meeting chatter area?
We think it would qualify if we could help through TARCOT. Chad, jump in, don't let me head in some direction.
The whole key to the TARCOT is if they give us a grant, a CDBG grant, one, the price of construction is going to increase because we have to have a storm shelter on site. So that could be a outside, it could be a inside, however they do it, inside the building. So that's going to increase construction. We can't rent it, or lease it, which we've talked about, you know, you've got families up there that have their Christmas meals there, so that's out. It can only be a senior center only. So that's how the USDA come up, and I went to a verse, if we got it, can we get a grant? And they said, if they gave us a grant, it would probably be 10 or 15% and Ruatan would pay the rest for construction. If the Ruatan Club gets it, it's, they would have to take a loan out at 1.2% interest, which is a good interest rate. And then if they do that, they could probably get additional grant funding at nine to 10, $11,000 on top of that. So the options financially are looking better for them than they are for us. But appreciate it.
Right now, those are the options that we've been found to look at, that sort of work.
So I mean, TARCOT would help us, but it would rule out a lot of.
A lot of the public.
Correct, correct.
Since it's a food distribution center, if we remodeled, I've done a figure, would it be eligible for ARPA funds? Well, I mean, we would have to take possession of it and become our building, and we use ARPA funds to fix it up, because it's a food distribution center. We've done that, then they could continue to use it, the public could.
If we own it, we don't have any restrictions on that use.
It needs to be where the community can use it at Play Seafill, like it's been for the past however many years.
There's some emotional attachment to that building, there really is. You guys have worked with it for years, you know that.
I still have a reservation about fixing up an old building because you've got it.
That old building? Well, I know we can't use ARPA funds for vertical construction.
We couldn't build any, we tried that with.
Then we hook a building to it.
That's a fair question of whether we could do something inside. If we were renovating the building, if we could do some things. I talk to Kelly almost every day, I can talk to her, and I read about that.
I'm waiting on the family to get back with us.
No, it's a senior center, we're trying to spread out COVID, and then you can try to sell it.
COVID, yeah. I mean, all the options that we've had, ideas seem pretty well, just cut and washed at the beginning, but then you start digging in, start thinking, it's more complex than.
Particularly the money.
Yeah, oh yeah, we can do, and then you start digging into it, and it's restricted, 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 restricted.
It's like the deed, you know?
Well, see, that's the whole key, the family can say, absolutely not, you know.
How many years has it been since they did that property?
A lot.
Two, three, six?
Yeah, it's a long.
Before Ms. Claire was?
Yeah, she was the last.
Oh, okay.
It's probably 36 years.
I was going to say 21.
Well, I just want Chad to give us status of where we are with that. That's something, I bet we've got to wait until we know where the family's going to go before we really have options to parent the data.
As long as we don't, you know, we need to keep wheels moving and, you know, and not let it fall between the cracks.
And if we get down to low funding, what can we do?
Yeah, that's what our next question is.
That's why I asked the question about rent. I mean, we're using it rent-free.
So to me, a building on that, if the original question was, we need some help, meaning Bryant Ruatan, to continue doing what we're doing. If we explore using ARPA funds to help renovate the building to a point where it is a little more usable, and we pay them rent, then we've helped them with the cost of renovation, and we help them with operations cost.
I'm going to back up a little bit. I believe that if we renovate the building, we need to, you cannot, you cannot pay a private entity a 12, wrong, John, you can't pay a private entity a 12.
They can have difficulty using ARPA funds to renovate somebody else's building. So we have to.
When it comes to rent, I know your budget can't support the rent, so, you know, we supplement your budget through the general fund, so that would be.
Coming out of.
Well, that's, well, that's. Well, rent's leading right now, if I looked at what they proposed, that they would give us a loan to do the.
It's like a hundred twenty-five dollars a month, is what they're offering.
Yeah, seven hundred bucks, so we're talking about $8,000.
I've got a quick question.
That wouldn't be a problem, we find out.
To help them with their bills and financial for the next month or two, it looks like it's going to be probably another year, it could be that long before we do anything. Could we reach out to community action and see if they could?
I'll do that.
Do that?
That's a good idea.
And I will, I will put a word in buggin' Ms. Carey's ear over there too. I had a meeting Tuesday, and of course, I'm on the board over there, so.
Let me ask you, at least my thought, we're not trying to help these folks just for it being a community center for them to have their activities in. We use this every day for distribution of meals as a part of our council of aging responsibility.
Do you mind being to lose that ability to service those people because he's probably, those people are very dependent upon it.
Don't we do it? Don't we do it in all cities with the meals, I mean, Stevenson?
We have six, how many centers?
Stevenson, Bridgeport, Pisgah, Paint Rock, Wright, Scottsboro.
Are we paying any rent anywhere? I mean, I know Stevenson, and I donated years ago when they built that building, I'd done a lot of work, you know, Stevenson built it, so therefore, you know, but it's just sort of like a community thing for everything, but.
No, sir, we're not paying rent.
Right, yeah. Because if we start paying rent out there, will they be wanting?
It's something to pursue.
You know, that was, you know.
Just looking for options to help.
I mean, it just seems good, but then you open up, get the bigger picture.
Yeah. Okay, that's the other, we do have one item that we do need to vote on tonight. I will, if I get John to help me with this, but Bob passed out the information. The state has reached a settlement in the, regarding the opioid litigation, it says Jackson County, but the state has reached a settlement with the Indo Health Solutions Incorporated and Indo Pharmaceuticals Incorporated. This settlement provides some portion of the funding to the state and some portion of the fund that is allocated to the municipalities and counties. In the last few sheets of this document, you will see what the count, the last four sheets, what money is allocated to counties. Availability of money for Jackson County is a little over $20,000. The city of Scottsboro, something over $88,000. And the only other that I could find is the county of Bridgeport, it was $210. I'm surprised at the small number, but for us, for them to move forward, they have to have a resolution signed and forwarded to them by Monday, the folks that are working on this, for us to be part of that. The money comes with a prescribed uses, uses, and a list of uses, but it has to do with opioid actions to help resolve the issue of opioid abuse. A couple of those that I looked at, one would be provide the funds to our first responders and police forces, another would be to drug counseling and those kind of things, there are others. But point of that is, if we get the money, it's got to go to something that's in this prescriptive list of uses of the funds, as I read it, John.
Good, right. You can just build roads.
Do you have any idea how the percentages are broken out, why the God's break four times what the county is?
It has to do with information that they were able to gather about. It has to do with information that they were able to gather about sales of... And I think a lot of it has to do with Jackson County Hospital being in the city. So with the cost of Jackson County Hospital, if they could associate with the opioid litigation, it was attributed to Scottsboro because it's within the city.
I understand, understand.
I think that's the big, big department.
So for us to get this by Monday, we need to take action to vote, to approve of signing the resolution that has been attached.
And if you don't do it, then all that means is that your $20,000 is worth, you have to...
So through the formality of setting the rules aside, that's just a good work session.
Yeah, but we talked about that, and that's what we would have to do.
I'll make the motion to set the rules aside, and we'll check the bill on that.
Okay, do we have a second? Do we have a second? All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to the Jackson County Commission to approve the resolution authorizing the county of Jackson to join the state of Alabama and other local governments as participants in the Indo settlement?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries.
By the way, that's only, this is only one defendant, this is not all defendants, so there should be additional funds coming.
And we need to take those one at a time.
Since it's a settlement, I guess we have to agree.
This is the only resolution you have, right?
Well, I'm saying, can we, could we say, and any other?
Some of the others might go to litigation, they may, there may be a payout that we're going to have to agree to.
Let me open, are there any other items that, given this is a vote session, that you would want to discuss?
I have one, I don't know if it's okay. Just yesterday, day before, I had concerns over the grilling area at the park for the people that does the grilling. Some of the residents that have to, they could maybe look in the near future at putting a roof over where they located the grills.
Since the state fire market, new regulations came out on removing the grills and the propane bottles and the open flame, they've moved some of that stuff out on the lawn and leading down the ramp to the dock, and it's just sitting out in the weather.
Right.
And if anybody cooks on it, they're going to be, you know, out in the weather elements and stuff, at least, you know, maybe put some kind of a roof over it, preferably metal.
Let me get with David and have him take a look.
Put an exhaust system in the area, sprinklers. I mean, who knows?
Is that okay to have, get to him and have him bring something before we... Any other? Okay, with that, our next meeting is the, is at 3:30 on the 27th of December. And so do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn this meeting.
Do you have a motion to adjourn, a second? You have a second? All in favor, say aye. Thank you very much.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.